All right, welcome to the Town West Bath Planning Board Meeting, May 7, 2024. I'm Gabriel with me.
Jamie Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
Oh, sorry, Jerry Richardson, the fourth attorney.
All right, thank you. So there is a court. And our only applicant today is the Site Development West Bath Parking LLC. Last time we left off. Well, I guess we'd start with the review of the traffic study. There was a second evaluation of the evaluation that had already been done. So I guess let's start there.
So we have Randy down with us from Royal Palmer.
All right.
Happy new year. So do you want to summarize, or do you guys want to jump in and ask any questions?
People can be down and say whatever.
Maybe just summarize as far as the spot.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. How specific would you like me to be? We, you know, we offered a review dated February 9, 2024. What we did was we went through the study that was completed and we identified point by point whether or not we agreed or disagreed and what our opinion is on each of the points. There were some that needed to be addressed, some items that needed to be addressed. Others we found satisfactory or met standards, typical standards. And Ms. Morvito provided a response to each of those comments on a point by point basis in her letter to Mr. Diffin on March 18, 2024. I reviewed her responses. And at this point, I do not have any outstanding issues. Traffic issues, that's all I looked at was traffic. I do not have any outstanding traffic issues that have not been addressed. If you have any questions at all, I can go into individual comments or...
Were there any changes? Was there any more study that you recommended, or were there any changes in the proposal that you recommended?
There were some items that needed to be looked at. Primarily the capacity analysis, I found a few items with that. The capacity analysis was changed or was revised as part of the response to my comments. And the responses were satisfactory and they they did not provide any there were no red flags based on those responses to my comments. The revisions were appeared reasonable and the results were met typical standards, satisfactory, such as capacity analysis.
So were there any changes that you recommend to that proposal?
No, two of the comments that I had brought up were, one was the lighting onsite for pedestrian safety. And they had proposed submitted a revised site plan that shows two overhead illumination to supplement what they already had. And the other item was pedestrian activity and pedestrians walking through the parking lot, all focused in the back corner. There was a comment in an email that said, you know, we could supplement the existing site plan with some more pedestrian accommodations or striping of a crosswalk. I have not seen that plan, but, you know, depending on what that issue that offers, that would address my issues.
Well, we had talked about an entrance and exit, I believe. You know, having the east just an entrance and the west just an exit or something. Do you remember that? Did you, did you think about that? Did you consider any of that?
No, I reviewed it on its merits, on its face value as far as, you know, is, are two full movement driveways acceptable?
So I both east and west would both would be entrance and exit.
Correct.
Where you looked at it, okay.
Correct. Yes, I didn't, I didn't look at it with an eye towards changing what they had. I was reviewing what they had submitted. I will just remind you too that main DOT team will also have to issue an entrance permit for those sort of things. So they will, they will also get reviewed by the main DOT team.
We, we have them, we have entrance permits.
Issue the address of the word. Directly answer.
Yeah, she did on the record, that'll be helpful.
Yeah.
We have entrance permits from DOT for the 900 spot proposal. We're going to go back to them with a smaller number, diameter, you know. So
Okay.
So we've got entrance permits already, we're going to go back and modify them for the smaller project, but we have them for the larger permit, for the larger project, which we came originally for 900 spaces. We already have those entrance permits.
Okay.
Randy, I got you good, Jim. I got a question for Randy. The traffic movement permit, it's not needed because it doesn't generate traffic, right?
Correct, it's, parking lots, they're kind of odd and they they go against what you would think is, but from the DOT standpoint, parking lots do not generate traffic. The people that are going to the parking lot are already, whatever they're going to the parking lot for, that's generating the traffic. That doesn't mean that, you know, traffic patterns and volumes aren't going to potentially change, which is why you need to take a look at capacity analysis, site distances, things like that. But from a DOT perspective, they don't, parking lots do not generate traffic, so therefore they don't need a traffic movement permit.
And like what other places do that, like the other, besides like a parking lot, like what?
Parking lots, pretty much, yeah, pretty much it as far as that type of, you know, that, that odds scenario, if you will.
Got you.
So the, so there's no new traffic generated. However, instead of being located in Bath on Washington Street or wherever, it's in West Bath, three miles away. And the, the item generating the traffic is Bath and Works.
Correct.
And that's not changing.
Right.
But the location of where the traffic is going to be is changing.
Right, yeah. It's, it's, it's an odd situation. But it's, you know, that's why, you know, you still need to do the due diligence from a traffic standpoint and, you know, look at the capacity analysis, look at the site distances. And if it needed an entrance permit from a main DOT perspective, then, you know, it still needs to get the entrance permit, which it sounds like, you know, they already have. It just doesn't need a traffic movement permit.
In this case, DOT actually looked at it as reducing trips, because all of these trips that are basically using that parking lot are generally coming from the south. And so they have four trips and travel miles are being reduced because they're going to stop in West Bath versus travel all the way to Bath. So DOT looked at it as a reduction in total vehicle miles traveled and it'd be beneficial, you know, to everybody because the trips were already going basically at, actually, so almost all the traffic is tuned from the south. They take left turns in and right turns out of the parking lot. So it's reducing travel.
That's hard to believe there, you know, that's reducing travel, you know, like a different, it's on a different plea room, how you can say that it's reducing travel, or that you think that...
The total vehicle miles traveled, like within the state, it's reducing, so that's why DOT looked at it as beneficial.
Because they're going to be going south instead of north at that road?
They're going to be stopping much shorter and then getting in a bus. Those trips are already going to that line now. Now they're going to be going in a bus part of the way, so there'll be fewer vehicles traveling to Bath.
And I think that's true, but they're traveling to West Bath where they never used to be.
Right.
I get it. So, so we're just moving the traffic out of the traffic problem from Bath to West Bath. And providing some backup at the same time. So okay. I, we may have some more questions, Brian?
Absolutely, I'll stay here all the time.
Please stay around. So we came up with some lighting stuff and you weren't aware of the discussions we had about the entrances. So we have a look at that, but we may ask you later. What we think we talked, what I think we talked about is having the east entrance, have the east location where the exit entrance, have that both be enter and exited there. And then have them, the west, just an exit, is that correct? Or was it vice versa? And Jamie was here at the time.
Yeah, I think it would be having the west, there was talk about having the west as an exit only, I think.
Okay.
But I don't think, I don't think it matters, honestly. I think they, like I've seen them, they just, they just drive, like the old gets backed up from the east entrance and then they just drive down to the west entrance because it's quicker, you know, to get home. So honestly, I don't think it, I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't think it matters. Like I think they just, they'll just drive down, because they can drive down faster through the parking lot because it's already stacked, the traffic's already stacked up to the east entrance.
Okay, and maybe this is just my recollection, but we talked about that, but we need to kind of settle down. Let's have a highway, another traffic engineer peer review the report that has been, has been submitted to see if they had any similar concerns or felt that that was necessary. And that's what Royal Palmer was brought in.
So what are your thoughts on that? Would there be any advantage to safety and managing the traffic from the lot? The east and west locations either just entrance or exit are involved.
Right, the more you, the more you concentrate, especially if you limit one of them to enter, enter and exit, but if you, and the other one to exit, the more you limit or focus them on an enter, the more you will, you'll have to reevaluate the need, for instance, of a left turn lane. You know, whether or not you need a left turn lane, because you focus all of the traffic entering into one location. So you'd have to reevaluate whether or not you need the left turn lane or right turn lane. If both locations are safe, i.e. they have the site distance, they're located in, you know, appropriate locations, both driveways in this case are separated by quite a distance. So one of the other things you would look at is, you know, how close are the driveways if you have two? DOT typically doesn't like to have two, it's poor access management. But given the, the distance between the two, it's not as much of an issue as far as, you know, entering and exiting and the locations and as, like I said, as long as you have the site distance. When you start to look at focusing the traffic, then you have to kind of reevaluate whether or not, you know, those items like left turn lanes, right turn lanes, whether or not you need those because you, you pushed everybody to one access.
I'm not mad. Basically, when we did the original study for the larger lot and you guys denied the project, one of the reasons was you thought we were concentrating and restricting the access to, one of the accesses to right turn only. And you guys thought two access points would be better because it does get congested. You set one lets out and you wanted a traffic split between two drives. So that was one of the reasons we went back to two full movement drives. It's because you thought one exit point would be too congested.
Okay.
Are you willing to hear from the applicant now?
Yeah.
Does the applicant have any comments now? Any changes to the original proposal?
Yeah, the only change Randy mentioned were the light calls that we had. At his request or his recommendation, we're adding interior aisles here and here. That was just to provide more lighting interior to the lot, so we got satisfied with Randy's concern. So that's the change we propose now in response to the traffic rule.
Show me again.
No, I see the red, the red light, the red, yeah.
So you did two dots here and here.
And this was the way down, are we going back here?
Yep. That's the fence off, so we're here.
I guess I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I got nothing.
Okay.
So anything else?
I thought some changes were made for, for the project. We did, I should say, in the meantime, between November and now, we did receive our final DEP permit, which I sent over to the car a week or so ago. I don't know if you guys have copies of that. If not, I did bring extras.
Can I get a copy?
Absolutely. I have a copy in the stack, if you want.
I got one here.
Thanks. So when did you receive that?
That came in, and if I remember correctly, it was early, it was when they, they worked through some of the naming conventions for the owner. He satisfied the transfer of the permits. Yeah, 11, April, is what we got the final.
April 11?
Yep.
Did you submit it?
Yep.
So what about the traffic question, the pedestrian traffic within the parking lot?
Yeah, we didn't identify anything in particular. I mean, we look at this as similar to a retail space where folks will get out of their cars and travel down the corridor, similar to those, to those uses. Happy to entertain, I think, when there'd be these concerns were people coming out in between cars. So I did, in my email, at least mentioned creating maybe a crosswalk here that would give folks a place to gather and cross over those travel lanes to the board. Thought that would be improvement. But in, in general, for pedestrian safety, this is going to be turned over only half at a time. So we feel like there's not going to be 400 people out here trying to find the cars all at once. And that we've all parked at Walmart or, or other large retail spaces, we know where you're going. You don't really have crosswalks or sidewalks for that, so.
Yeah, it's some of those, it's some of those developments that have created pedestrian walkways between the parking lot is actually, it's like at Walmart.
Some of them have, yeah, not the one in Longford where I go, but so happy to entertain, add in some crosswalks there.
Do you feel that would be adequate then to adjust that to you?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that it's similar to a retail facility. I think this one is a little bit different in that because it is kind of more concentrated to specific times. And the times when the vehicles are most active are the times when the pedestrians are most active versus kind of spread out a little more. Personally, I would like to see some more pedestrian accommodations.
If I could just maybe add...
What would they, excuse me, what would they do? Show me on that. Can you show me on that?
Just, just more direction to pedestrians as to how to get them from, you know, where they're parked to this location. I would leave it up to the site engineers to, to offer, because I don't know all of the subtleties of the site as far as what their restrictions are and what their limitations are. But some pedestrian accommodations to, to get them focused here, because, you know, they're getting picked up or dropped off here and then they walk to wherever they're parked.
Makes sense.
And then the same thing, so, you know, when they're being dropped off, granted, they are going to be shuttled, so it is kind of neater, if you will. But again, the highest concentration, you know, 90% of the time, you're not going to see any activity on the site. It's going to, you know,
But it's going to be all at once, you're right.
And then it's going to be kind of focused. So just my concern was where this is in the back corner and all of this parking is here, that they're going to walk this way and they're going to walk in between cars. So that, that was my concern.
So being between cars, it's sort of the, the vision here is to strike those spaces and fly those four pedestrians to the hews, to give them an area to, safety hews, to refuse as they wait to access. And they make their way over here. And I will say that, you know, while it feels like everyone's going to be short on it once, leaning on it once, I think when it comes to the buses and these people getting dropped off, they will be pretty spread out and staggered. Even the bus load show up, get to their car, take off, and then kind of make their way out that way. There will be, all the cars that are coming in to get on the bus will have arrived all of them. So you're not going to have that sort of conflict there, so. I, I, I think these are good recommendations to give folks refuse to cross maybe some of the drive aisles. But adding formal sidewalks or walks in between lanes is, feels like overkill there.
Can we, how, will those aisles be used as pedestrian walk areas?
You strike that out, it will not be parked in. And we, we could fly, yeah, those are four refus for pedestrians that can drive.
They'd be paved or like a sidewalk or how would that?
They'd be paved and painted, yeah. We don't have any curbs out here because it would create maintenance issues and
Blowing issues.
Yeah.
You said for refuse or ref- refuse?
Refuse, yeah, sorry. See the words are...
So I guess I need to understand exactly what you're proposing for pedestrian safety out here. There's this walkway between the, you know, to the bus area that you put a little squiggle on and then between these aisles. And this is just, these are just right here, and these are just painted?
Painted crosswalks, yeah.
Painted crosswalks, what, five, six, five?
Here, that would come, usually there's, there's six feet wide painted. Well, I think that would be helpful.
Do you mind if I have another question?
No, please. Yes.
One of the criteria for the driveway entrance permits are site distances. Do you happen to know what they use for site distances?
Good question for the traffic.
I mean, it's different for automobiles than for trucks, correct?
Yes, if you have anywhere than 30% trucks. It's different if you have greater than 30% of traffic utilizing that drive as trucks, then you have a higher standard.
So what did you use on this one?
Just regular passenger cars, because those, that lane under is going to be very occasionally used, you're going to have a couple.
So what's it, 250 feet for an automobile or?
We, we measured them, so the town standard is 450 and that's what we recommended.
415?
450, 450 feet. The state entrance permit's only required 425. But we measured from the southeastern drive, 500 feet plus in both directions. And from the northwest only drive, it's 600 feet in both directions.
So you're well over...
Yes, well over, yeah.
Okay. Let's see, I did have some questions. So your proposal to the is for how many parking spots?
475. 475.
475. That's your final word.
Well, to the application, would you have?
Will that change with the, with the crosswalk?
It would, it would be reduced, upside down.
I mean, would you just think about adding a couple spots in the further east area?
Over, no, at this stage, you don't really have space to add any.
You wouldn't, even that's on this existing paint there yet, right here?
It's the lane that I was on.
We could, we could upset that here, yeah.
I mean, how, you're probably just going to lose two spot, uh, cross, actually, right? So that would be extending that another 20 feet?
Yep, we could.
Okay. So that, would that be a proposal?
Um, sure, I'll have to look back. Sure, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to dive in and dive for four spots, I guess.
So in your DEP permit, I see references to snow piles, no snow piles over six feet.
No snow piles over six feet.
No snowstones over six feet. What's the reason for that?
It's for the, the overall weight of the snow on the lay down floor itself. So this is, they don't want giant snow dumps out here that are going to be taking over a whole chunk of the lay down yard or a chunk of the parking area, so they're limiting the snow piles to six feet overall.
And so you can't stack snow on six feet tall, but you could, but you could bring in pile and piles of soils.
Yep.
How, can you explain that?
And that's the DEP held up to this snow standard, I mean, this doesn't, it goes against the original solid waste permit where they're allowed to store soils here, but they specified snow. And the reasoning was because they didn't want a municipal sized snow dump spread out over large portions of the parking lot.
It said something in the permit about the weight, the reason was the weight to pack it.
Yep.
So if snow could be packed to, to pack the landfill like an aisle gravel?
We're permitted with the DEP to put the soil materials out there, but we're not permitted to put more than six feet of snow there.
Sure.
So what is the size of the waiting shelter? Have a covered shelter?
Yeah, we have provided those details in the last submission. It's a six by 12 shuttle bus waiting area, and then we have a pedestrian area here, straight.
But the, the covered waiting area is six by 12?
We have three of those, they're six by 12.
Oh, can't it serve?
Yes. I think originally we had shown 20 by 40, but we went to, went to the other, the other one. value for new shelters.
Because your DEP permit says twenty by twenty?
Yep. This is less, this is six by, thirty-six.
And the DEP permit talks about, this is why I asked about the number of parking spots. It talks about eight hundred and thirty spaces. So your DEP permit is actually for eight hundred and thirty-five?
It's for, it was based on the original application before it was revised here.
Yeah?
So after this, so what is the DOT driveway entrance permit? We're going to have to go back and change that number. We're keeping the overall footprint, we've talked to DEP, they're comfortable with us sending it to my revision as soon as it's to the town.
But then the area that was going to be used as four hundred spots or three hundred and fifty spots, that's now a lay down area. That's a different use, that's not mentioned in the DEP permit.
It's in the solid, the original solid waste store.
Well, this is, for eleven, there's no mention of any lay down area. I don't see anything in the, in the whole permit about a lay down area. I guess what you're concerned is that you have, you have eight hundred and thirty, you know, permitted by the DEP, but you're only going to be allowed, are only applying for four hundred and seventy-five from the town. What's for rent, you know, you know, on the deck of the moon kind of thing, having that changed to expand the parking?
You have to go back in front of the town to that.
Yeah, we have to come back to the de... So DEP does not give us the ability to put, you guys control the number of spaces?
It'd be a plan amendment which require a commission or revised plan and full review, public hearing, peer review and all that.
But then you already had your DEP permit, right? You wouldn't have to go back to that?
Would not necessarily, no, if the town was able to approve eight hundred and thirty spaces for us.
So, we don't have any more questions there?
No. I'm giving.
Give it? So you, uh, what do we have to vote on?
Well, where we left off, and it's been a while, you, well, there were two things we're kicking around, one was all this traffic discussion and the vote ultimately was to get a traffic study, now you have that, you've talked about it. And then there was another issue about confirming the use of the code enforcement officer and the town attorney, I don't know if that all got worked out?
Yeah, so we, I think we reviewed that following meeting, I think it was the twenty-fourth. So the town attorney did not offer an opinion, she said that it is solely the purview of the code officer and in the file I do have a written letter from John confirming that this is allowed to use based on the original approval of the parking area with lay down area.
So if you're satisfied with that, it seems like we're just back on traffic, you did vote in the affirmative on all the other requirements, I can't see a need to go through that all again. And all of you were present, I believe, before, and three of you are constituents of forum here tonight. I was worried that the whole board would be gone or something, I don't know, I don't know, play that out, you're here. And so what I am also hearing is that there's some proposed changes, it seems like those changes have to be shown on a plan and brought back and then you could give, maybe have some sort of straw vote tonight that if they can make those changes as discussed, that you'd be in favor of the project, be non binding, because I see the, see it in front of you. It's hard to write an approval that talks about something that's not on a plan, I want the approval to say on the plans dated, May twentieth or, you know, whatever the date is that they come in, that's what you're approving.
There've been only two things on, the pedestrian walkways and the lighting, correct? Just those two things?
That's, yeah, there's some pedestrian walkways that, and you could take another approach and delegate that to the code enforcement officer, but that's...
Make a contingent.
Yeah, how hands on you want to be on it, I've seen it done that way, but you're, you know, you're losing control if there's some misunderstanding. It is pretty impressive how, how close this seems to be towards a consensus and everybody's very close to being on the same page here, so it seems to me.
Yeah, I think those suggested changes are relatively minor and...
So one thing I can do is write this all up for you, if you want me to, you're welcome to do it, but I hadn't discussed this before, I'd write this all up and in a, if I don't form, I'd provide a copy of the draft decision to opposing counsel, not opposing counsel, counsel. And then you could discuss it at your next meeting and maybe by the next meeting, that revised plan could be in front of you, take care of it all at one time. But again, I've just...
Next in a week. We can do that, can't we?
Yeah. It wouldn't be in time for next Tuesday because we wouldn't have time to advertise it.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm learning to say no, but that happened. I haven't learned that, yeah, forty-two years, so, I mean, it's just, I think the product would be better if it did.
Okay.
And then they could have, you know, two weeks or something.
We do have an item...
You weigh this long.
We do have an item to vote on, right?
Yes.
On one point five?
Yes, you, yeah, the, yeah, the traffic item might, um, yeah.
So to clarify, you're advocating for sort of going through the performance standards tonight and then you drafting?
Well, I think that they've gone through the performance standards before and unless you want to...
We still have a couple more, unfortunately, yeah, we got to one sixteen, yeah.
Oh, do we stop and not pass?
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, I haven't, unfortunately, the word piece was...
So we have one point five, which we, three, three opposed, and then we stopped at one sixteen, we think it passed three to two.
That's one sixteen passed.
So we have one seventeen, one eighteen.
Yeah, so finish those up. And, am I missing something?
Nope. So I think we'd vote on one point five first, right?
Yes. We can make some motion that meets the standards. I can write some findings based on what discussion I hear for something along the lines of independent traffic engineer came and made some recommendations, reviewed everything, seemed to be appropriate, some changes were requested and have been agreed upon, that type of thing.
So we could, in our vote on one point five, we could make a contingent upon some other things, or does it have to be yes or no?
It has to be whether the standards met or not, and that you could say the standards were met provided they supply an appropriate plan. I'm thinking, I'm hearing that you're going to have this plan, or, what should we look at here?
You think there's more on?
In two weeks. Or maybe two weeks, or when will the next meeting?
The next meeting's in a week and then the next regular meeting's a month from, a week from now.
Right. So it would depend on the board's availability, if they want to have a special meeting, also the next regular meeting, it's the June election, so I don't know if we want to reschedule that or keep it.
Well, so maybe we can do that a week earlier or something.
We can certainly cross that bridge when we get to it. So you have to root it first.
I mean, maybe if you plan is to get that plan and then vote on one five when you see the plan, but I think you'll always be able to say, if they produce a plan that is consistent with what you discussed, that you intend on, you'd be favorably inclined to vote favorably. Now would be the time to get out any reservations, if you've got something on your mind that just, even if they put that in, I still can't vote for it, I think we ought to do that now.
Yeah, I think it's a bad plan, I think everything involved, the whole parking lot there and the expansion is a bad plan.
But it has to be, you have to be able to refer to an ordinance provision to say why it's a bad plan, you can't vote against it just because you don't like it.
Yeah, I know that, Cory, like I can't...
You mean it's a bad plan for traffic reasons or all, all a whole bunch of reasons?
What's that?
You were talking about it's a bad plan for traffic.
I don't know what, where it is in here, but in this book, in here somewhere, it says if the, if the planning board member feels it's not in the best interest of the community, that's what they, that's what they do.
I don't think that that's any of the standards that you have to meet, though.
It's in the code, Cory, it's in this book.
You have to meet the performance standards, though, it's, those are the things that apply the...
Yeah, so, I mean, in all due respect, I think you've got, you know, pedal a little metal on these standards and those type of broader standards that usually at the beginning of zoning ordinance aren't looked on as, as like so broad that you can, you can make any decision, it's really got to be tied to something like that, otherwise you'd be looking at a remand from the court, the court would say you're basing it on something that's too amorphous, you just can't say, I think it's not in the best interest. Now, it's not unusual to have a divided board, you're entitled to your view and I don't, and the last thing I wouldn't be is some guy from out of town telling you what to do here, I mean, but, but just, you know, based on my experience, you've got to focus on these and say yes or no, did they meet that standard, not, not the introductory technical standards. So sometimes it involves some, just like letting it go, other times people will just hang in there, sometimes there's a minority report, I have no idea what the rest of you feel at this point either. You have no idea what you stand for.
Yeah, I'm just being honest.
Yeah. But you can win with two out of the rate, I think, majority of those present voting.
So would somebody make the motion?
Okay, for one five, will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion for unsafe conditions with respect to use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. All in favor?
Well, you have to...
Yeah, yeah.
Move that it meets the standard and then vote.
Move that it meets the standard, all, so...
Well, then I think you've got to say provided that they make the changes that we've done, you know, showing the additional pedestrian safety features have been discussed at the meeting tonight.
With the lighting?
The lighting? The pedestrian...
Just to start, just to clarify, is that a condition of approval or is that, so we're approved, this, you're doing the approval now?
Well, you've got to tell me what you want, my recommendation is have a straw vote on, on this traffic item and see the, see the actual plan at next meeting, have your final vote when you see it and you like it. But I think it would be helpful for the advocate to know that they're looking at, well, they're looking at approval, if there's approval and an absence of like, you know, huge change, which no one would expect, that they come back, it's going to be a pretty easy meeting, you know, we're just going to go through all the legal stuff, I'm going to put it up for you. So this could be a straw vote and then see the plan and then the next time we get the final vote and, and you could say the motion could be, that you vote to, that that standard's been met, provided the advocate provides the suggested changes on pedestrian safety and lighting.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Are you guys good with that? Do we get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, based on the plans being changed and resubmitted, the way that we've talked about them, we're making a motion that one five would, would pass.
Yeah, that the standard of one five is met.
That it is met, okay. All right, then all in favor?
Well, you need a second.
First you need a second.
I'm motion that it is met.
Is there a second here?
No second.
Okay, then all in favor?
I think we'd ask for discussion.
For discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay. Would you like to go first, Jerry?
I got nothing to say, I think everybody understands where I'm at, there's a traffic problem there, it's going to get even worse when you add more cars, it's, it's that simple. And this was brought up when this, when this was put across the planning board, however year the parking lot was permitted the first time, it was rated one of the conditions that traffic, if traffic was an issue, why are you shaking your head there, that's what it says in the permit that was granted, that's what it says. So, and it's just going to get worse and worse.
So my comments are that this is, this has been before us for some time, we've talked about all of the traffic, we've heard from two traffic engineers about, you know, what's going to happen out here. I'm not sure that the, the impact of the traffic has been considered properly because it's all going to happen within forty-five minutes, whenever the shift changes out, but at three thirty and four, the two shifts, so people are going to be leaving at three thirty-five, three forty, as soon as they get on the bus and get up here, and we're going to have people coming in for the four o'clock shift, and it's all going to happen at once. And, and that's a big concern. And I really wish I'd seen more on my traffic study because we're just, we're going to be moving this traffic issue from one location to another. It's certainly better that it has four hundred and seventy-five parking spots and eight hundred and thirty, but I think that eight hundred and thirty parking spots isn't too far in our future, the way that this is being proposed, there will be a lay down area now, but the DEP permit is saying it's eight hundred, for eight hundred and thirty parking spots. So we know that that's in the future. So I'm, I'm really at some, which, you know, to approve this or not, I mean, I just don't see, I, I just don't see that it's not going to be a problem. That's all I have to say, I guess.
I mean, were you allowed to?
No, they're deliberating right now.
We have, yeah, we cut it.
And it's obviously, it says unreasonable highway or public road congestion, and to me, that's, it's unreasonable. They, they knew back in the original planning board approval that it could be an issue, and it is an issue, it's just going to become more of an issue with the expansion.
The problem I see is that we've heard from two traffic engineers that are registered in the state of Maine, and they're both saying that all these considerations have been met. So...
That is a problem, that is a problem for you, if, if you make this decision, you know, based on the amount of evidence here, that if there's a court case and the town can be stuck defending a court case, it may not win, I can't predict what a court's going to do, but there's a lot of...
Oh, come on.
Momentum on this. Well, I, I think everyone has their case and your case, that they saw the traffic engineers. There are some case law that suggests that laypeople can give their opinions about traffic, Chapel Road Associates versus Chapel Wells and some of the cases out in Gray that, that say that type of thing, in other words, the locals say I understand this area better than the traffic experts, and the board has accepted that, but, I mean, I can't speak for them, but I, I, you typically, the board will go with the documented evidence of the experts to fly out, it's like painting and lines, if they go out there, you do that at your own risk, but there'd be a court case, it costs the town a lot of money, the town loses.
Randy, did you visit the site at the three forty-five timeframe?
Not at the beat time, no.
Diane, did you ever visit the site at the beat time?
The morning beat.
The morning beat, no, no.
I mean, I would like to see something like, you know, that, that we had in nineteen ninety-eight, instead of the term, it's an issue that they have to either address it or, or change it, you know, or remediate their traffic, and I'm not sure how we define that, but I'd, I'd like to see something like that because that's my biggest concern. Here we've got two professional engineers who are registered in Maine and so forth, and they're saying it's, it's okay. And, you know, we're sitting somewhat in judgment here, like a judgment, and nobody wants their decisions overturned, but if we could make a contingent upon... But if we could make a contingent upon that it's true, the traffic is, becomes an issue, that there will be an attempt to mediate that. If, if we could do something about that, then, uh, I guess I'd
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe we could get really creative here, something that in a year's time, that they submit a updated traffic report, and that, uh, further remediation measures could be considered at that time. That's a little, little funky, but I think it could be done if they, particularly if they would agree to it, um, that a report could be submitted, because it, it all, it, it really does help to see it in operation.
Yeah, we've got two, we've got two traffic studies that were done, and not one person visited the site during the peak discharge of the park.
All the more reason why if we made a contingent, then that would, if there was a problem, they're saying there's no problem. So, but if there is a problem, then we've got a way forward.
Can I just expand my answer on visiting the site during the PM? We did not, but we had the counts done, and the counts are done continually, so we had the actual volume that came and went, and that's what all the models are based upon. So although we weren't physically there in the PM, the traffic counts were done in the PM, and we had all of those numbers, which is what formed the basis of the study.
And the traffic counts show backups.
I think it's something that we're not gonna see.
No, the model doesn't show backups with the volumes. But not on the high, not on the high, I mean, there may be some internal, but not impacting D Jason Street.
I don't think it's something we're gonna be able to see until it happens, until it, it's a lost being used.
But if you can see it right now.
And it could be a year, it could be two years, it could be five years, uh, maybe that's the revisit in two and five years or something, until it's fully utilized. I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna know until it's, it happens. And what they've done is they've used the very scientific approach, I've read your study, and, uh, read all your comments, and looked at the traffic counts and so forth. And, and I just don't think that their methodologies do take into account. However, I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt, if there's some way we can build a contingency into this. That if it is an issue, they will remediate. Either cut down on the parking or put in storage lanes or, I don't know, but something. I mean, that's the big issue here, is the traffic's gonna come out of that. And we've seen it, you know, if the light backs out, I mean, you know, there's two hundred people leaving there at the same time, or even just a hundred, all at once. I mean, it's a hundred cats. So, is that gonna be a problem? You know, have a four hundred and seventy-five cats coming and going within forty-five minutes, an hour?
Is there a lesser number that would work? I've seen that happen, in other words, if somebody comes in with a five hour.
We've already done that.
You're right, you've done that.
You meant the, the standard of the last meeting, which requested the period, you know, the period you were telling you, it was right, it works, and now, I'm pretty sure at that meeting, the board took a strong call and said, the period would count, and now you're talking, it says it doesn't count. It's okay.
Is there a way, a way that you would agree to a, um, review after one year that would, uh, maybe some money in escrow or something to make further modifications on the site?
What are the metrics? I mean, what are the metrics?
What is that?
Because a year from now, somebody might
Well, you get an updated traffic study, if it shows that i- if it is going haywire, then, then there's a I think you're making a a wild one.
That either the number of, the number of parking spots is reduced, or they can remediate. And they don't have to leave any money, you know, guarantee any money, and they just, just restrict packing to, with two hundred and twenty they have now, if there's a problem.
Dan brings up a good point, it's hard to know what the metrics would be for that though.
It would be the metrics of the, of, of, in the, in the, in the, the town's bureau review, so that there was a now traffic problem, that those problems will be addressed at, at that time. He's saying that he doesn't expect it to be a traffic, uh, problem, uh, but if it turns out, but basically your case is, we don't know, because this is such a unique situation, that there's not a lot of parking lots like this to, to go by. It's, it's like retail, but very much different than retail, because people are all showing up and leaving at the same time, two times a day, that's how I understand it. So, maybe Randy stays on retainer and comes back in a year and gives an updated report, and if, if further adjustments need to be made, the applicant would agree to make them. I, I, it's, we're out in a
That might work.
I'm trying to figure out something that would work.
I think there's, uh, if I may, um, I can, I can see both sides.
Yes.
Sitting in the middle, I can see both sides, and, um, the, the, the issue comes down to definitions. You say there's a problem, what your idea of a problem is may be different from what their idea of a problem is, may be different from what Diane's, what Mike's. So, I think a problem needs to be defined.
Although the problem is defined by the town traffic engineer based on, um, the standards of the industry.
That would work.
In other words, what is, so why do you look back, you agree to come in here and, and have a discussion in a year, and if Randy says, you know, it is true, we didn't expect this, but if, you know, I think you need to, I'm just making this up, like an extra lane, or an extra cutoff, or an extra this, or something like that, um, then the applicant
I don't, in my opinion, that is back, then Ted will just sue the town then at that point. That's what, that's what I see.
I mean, to that, to that.
Can I say something?
No, let, let Ted.
Just identify yourself.
Ted.
Yeah, but it's just, it's on tape, that's what I
Okay, I live in this town, I build roads all night long. I've been up here and watched that light, the light, the new lights, but it's wonderful, it's bad. And there's seven cars that back up, turn that three thirty, forty every time, it's like a light. And the light turns, it's, it's strange, there's no cars here. And then it's back up to seven, and there's actually seven cars coming from the other side, so that both sides are the same, so it's, it's really funny. Here we have a parking lot with seven cars coming to it, it doesn't back up to J R Hills, it doesn't back up that far. And I, I live here, the, the, the fire chief was out here, so, so it's, it's a question of
What did you say about the fire chief, excuse me?
The fire chief was here, I asked him that night, have you ever seen it back up the hills? He said, no, he never had.
Well, we can't, he's not here to say yes or no, so we can't really be saying what somebody would say, I did say.
Well, I did hear, I've seen it, I've actually physically seen it. But what I'm saying, that the reason there's four and seventy-five cars is for two shifts, so the, the couple buses that are coming back and forth, they're not dropping off two hundred people at once.
Here, you've got a practical problem here, and we're, we're down like the, you know, bitter end of the
It's two shifts.
But, uh, I don't think that you're gonna change any hearts and minds here, I'm trying to figure out if there's, if there's a practical way to resolve Jim's issue by some sort of futuristic look, you know, based on scientific standards. And if, if everybody says, no, we don't wanna do that, then, you know, my work is done here, and, and you can, you know, pursue your options accord, or, or whatever you choose to do, I'm just trying to figure out if there's some way, because I saw some interest in Jim in, in, in doing that, and, and I, I saw Randy, nodding his head at least, to me, interpreting it as a possibility, that if you're applying scientific standards, industry standards, that maybe there could be a review. So, you know, it seems to, to me, this is the time to air it all out, don't leave anything, you know, on, on the table here, uh, because it doesn't get, you know, getting better after this, if the vote is no.
I think it has to be clearly defined, as Randy stated, exactly that, what you're gonna be expecting in a year, and then there's monetary value pointed to that. So, we know how much money to put into escrow.
And the escrow is just an idea that will
But, but that we don't come back in a year, and they're still trying to make up or figure out things, what else to do to add to the
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah.
I think it was just being, to reduce the number of parking, we just reduced the number of parking spots.
He said he didn't think that escrow was necessary, I guess that's true, that that was a possibility. So, you could have a traffic review in a year, and, and with the idea, uh, if Randy was identifying problems based on industry standards, uh, the board would, uh, in its discretion, be able to reduce the parking lots.
So, um, we have a motion before the board.
Right, before we address the motion, I just wanna go back, because you said this was one fifteen, and gave red for one fifteen, which is addressing any river, stream, or brook. It doesn't talk about traffic at all in there, so I just wanna make sure
No, we're in five, we're
One point five, one point one five.
One point one five, any river, stream, or brook.
One point four, one point five.
One point oh five, okay.
Actually, it's just one point five. So we have this motion before us, so we really, if
So there was a motion that's been made and seconded, that the standard has been met, and so you could, you could vote on that and say this is not even a straw vote, this is a real vote. I was, I was talking about a straw vote before, uh, because maybe I mistakenly thought that there was a consensus. And, and so if this vote goes down, another motion could be made to the effect that, uh, that one point five is met if the following occurs.
Okay.
So I think, unless you wanna withdraw your, your motion.
You could just do that. Just withdraw your motion, then make it
Yeah.
Okay, you withdraw your motion, so, so is there a second motion you wanna make, which would be, I think, to the effect that one point five is met, uh, provided there's a condition in the approval that within one year, a new traffic study by the town's traffic engineer submitted, and, um, that the applicant agrees, uh, and the applicant will, uh, reduce parking spaces as may be recommended by the independent study.
To get to what the professionals are saying is what's gonna happen.
Right, if, if Randy comes in in here and says, you know, this is, this didn't turn out the way I thought it was gonna be, but I think that, you know, cutting ten spots in this corner would really help, um, then, um, then the applicant would, why, why, I mean, they, they probably wanna think about
I would add to that, that, that the, in a year or when the law is fully utilized, because it's gonna take a lot of building, and they may not use the whole
Okay, so maybe in two years.
Yeah, maybe two years, two years I would think would be right.
You would retire that?
No. Not in two.
So I'll make that a motion.
What, what's the metric, what's the metric, just what Randy comes up with?
Yeah, but, well, Randy's gonna do an analysis based on industry standards, and if those dictate, uh, a need for some changes, um, such as reduction of, um, if, if they, if it dictates reduction of parking spots, so that will be a condition of the approval.
Randy, is there any
Sorry, there's a lot of talking going on here, and it's really hard for me to take the minutes, because they're having a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Randy, is there any industry standards as far as traffic, like, what the speed limit is on that road, and then when traffic is backed up? Like, I can't, would imagine that, like, you can't have traffic backed up on a road that has a speed limit of forty miles an hour, right?
Right, you, you, you look at, um, for the driveways, for instance, you may look at, uh, site distances, because as you have queues, um, you know, do you still have the appropriate site distance, uh, so that somebody has time to stop and before they hit the back of a queue?
So, so what I've witnessed, Randy, is the traffic gets backed up from the light to the, to the west entrance right now, so then we add more spots to it, it's gonna back up even more.
Right.
So my, my, like, what is the industry standard on that? Because you saw no problem with that, so to you that is acceptable, right? Is that fair to say that that is acceptable?
Uh, based on the capacity analysis that was done, what would have to be done is, uh, it's my understanding the signal is relatively new, um, is that, you know, we have to look at, you know, what impact has the new traffic signal had? Um, could timing and phasing be done to better improve the capacity of the intersection? Um, if the, uh, issue is at the unsignalized site driveways, you know, what is causing those problems? Uh, or, or is there a problem, is there a safety issue, is there, uh, capacity issue, is there a site distance issue?
So is it acceptable to have traffic backed up from the light to the west entrance? Is that acceptable in industry standards?
It, it depends, uh, if, if for instance, um, you get a green light and all of that traffic empties out, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But if you have what's called phase failure, where you have to sit through three green lights, that's different. Um, the other item would be, if there's a queue, is that queue causing other problems? Is it causing access, uh, so that you can't get access to driveways? Is it causing problems?
But what, what is the metric of that, though? Like, what is unacceptable? Do you, you would say, that's what, that's kind of what I'm asking, like
Un, unsafe is the key, unsafe is always the key. Um, as far as the metrics on the, um, traffic signal, it would be level of service. You know, it has to meet a certain level of service. Um, you shouldn't go below a D, for instance.
Below what?
Below what?
D, D.
Level of service.
A D?
D, maybe you see D.
What's a D?
Uh, it's similar to a report card, where A through B is
Okay.
is okay, uh, E and F, um,
I mean, the other side of this coin is, is a lot of traffic leaving this lot, there's still local traffic coming from Foster's Point Road, Little Rock Road, New Meadows Road, and State Road, I mean, this, and, and the, uh, building station there, and Allo, I mean, there's still that traffic.
Right, so
That we don't wanna unnecessarily
So, so traffic volumes, you know, would have to be counted, you know, that, that's part of the analysis, you can't really do the analysis. We do more observations, you know, observations, we're not part of this, um, but we would have people there, you know, observing traffic.
There is no, so there's just models, is that the way?
Models.
And that's based on, on
Well, that's because you can't, observing it now really doesn't tell you what's gonna happen when it's completely
Well, yeah.
You, you have to forecast that.
Right.
The other, the difference would be that, that those parking spaces would be in place, so you actually can, you know what's gonna happen, because you could see it versus forecasting it.
Right, but we have a, a model of what is the state of being right now.
Correct.
And then that's used to expand out, right? And that's what we'll do.
Correct.
Okay, so in one five, it says will not cause an unreasonable congestion, what would unreasonable congestion be?
Typically, unreasonable congestion is, um, less than a level of service D.
Can you explain that to us?
Level of service E or F.
Right, a, a, a level of service E or F. Basically, level of service, you can think of it as, um, how congested it is, how, um, how much time somebody has to wait at a traffic signal. You know, number of seconds, you know, if, if they reach a certain wait time, if you will, um, then it's considered level of service E or F. There's different levels of service criteria for a signalized intersection than there is for an unsignalized intersection. People are willing to wait a little bit longer at a signalized intersection than they are at an unsignalized intersection. So, there's, there's a bunch of criteria that, um, could apply.
So
So we have a, a standing model of the way that it is now, and then we have the studies that have said that it's actually going to be less traffic on the road because of this lot, providing parking from four other cars that are further up the road at moment would be transitive.
Yeah, that's, that's a, a general statement.
Right, so, okay, so could that be a metric that is used because we have the study of what it is now? And that it's supposed to be relieving congestion on this road, so then that would be something that we could measure against in the future?
That would, that would be extremely difficult to measure, I'll, I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Um, if you were to, um, there, there's a metric called double A D T, angle A D T, double A D T. Um, that's how many vehicles pass a point at any particular location. Um, if you were to measure that now, um, and measure that, say, in a year or two years, you can't tell why that double A D T went up or down, because it could be due to other developments. You can't make it, you can't determine whether or not it's specific to the parking area or the garage. What you can do is you can do a more in-depth study as to where do the people in this parking lot live? And have they, where did they used to park, and where do they park now? That's the only way that you'd be able to do that, is if you had the specifics of the, you know, who is parking there, where did they used to park? You know, where was their assigned parking area before? If you knew their assigned parking area before, and you know that this If you knew their assigned parking area before and you know that this is, um, closer to their origin, then you can say that yes, the vehicle miles traveled is less. So they traveled less. Overall, the vehicles traveled less to get to this location than they did to the other location.
Okay. All right, so it's not something that you can say, like, we have the present, like, what it is right now and then in two years we'll have a different study and you just essentially subtract.
Right, no, you can't.
Because you don't know where the other.
Correct, it's not that simple.
Okay, so, so.
It's more of a, it, it would be based more on a very specific looking at that location. Um, and are there issues or challenges for that location? And potentially the, the traffic signal, um, that are occurring based on observations, based on doing turning movement counts, based on doing capacity analysis, um, safety review, see if there were any, um, crashes associated with any of this area. Um, and you can't tell specifically that it was directly related to the parking area. Uh, unless it was, for instance, at the parking area driveway. Uh, but you could do the capacity analysis for the site driveways. You can do the capacity analysis for the traffic signal and see if it's operating, um, at acceptable levels of service.
Okay, Al, why don't I take a shot at reading something here that I've been scribbling? I don't know, I'm just trying. Um, two years from the date of the approval, applicant will pay for an updated traffic report from the town's traffic engineer. Uh, using, uh, standard industry metrics, the applicant will, uh, make changes to the parking lot as recommended by the town's engineer. So it's not just.
Or reduce the number of.
Well, that could be a change. I mean, what Randy said, it's not that simple. It's, it's not just, uh, you know, take ten, it could be other things, like you gotta fix that light.
For instance.
It's running the wrong way.
If there, if there were a safety issue, uh, reduction of parking spaces may not solve a safety issue.
That's what he's saying. He might be like a.
It may be.
Create a larger, uh, you know, extra, oh, it's not just reducing spots.
Do you wanna make that motion or do I make it?
Yeah.
I'll make it as a motion. Is there a second?
Um, I have a second. Um, all in favor?
Is, there was no discussion, did you say?
Discussion, I'm sorry, before, before the vote, forgive me, discussion.
So my issue with that is that there's still no clear, as far as what gets done? Like, what, what the metric would be for all of them?
Using, using industry standard metrics, and he's got a bunch of them.
And, but, but, and the issue I have with that is his industry standard metric, and Diane's industry standard metric shows no issue even right now. And there is an issue even right now. So like, I'm, I'm afraid that your industry metric doesn't, is not gonna show. I don't know, we're saying from two traffic engineers that have not visited the site in the evening time, won't watch everybody leave.
Well, you know, the benefit is, yeah, I assume that it will be built in the near future, right? Cause you wanna have like a year under your belt. You'll have that time to see how it plays out. Cause that's what is, is different about this is we don't know exactly how it's gonna play out. You'll have that time to learn more and see what you're saying that they don't even, they don't see a problem now, you do. But, um, maybe not everybody agrees with that.
I have no more comments.
Why don't you vote again?
Do you have any further discussion?
No, that's it.
Okay. So the motion is, or, so we just move to the vote?
Yeah.
All right. So, as Jim said, the motion, um, all in favor? And now we continue on to the.
Yeah, and, and it's, I understood those other changes are gonna be brought in here in the next couple of weeks.
So you should ask them to oppose that.
And oppose?
All right, so I think we, I think, I don't know if we hit the wall or something.
So we got through 116, so we have.
Seventeen eighteen.
117 is if any lots in the proposed subdivision and/or site plan have shore frontage on a river, stream, brook, great pond, or coastal wetland. As those features are defined in Title 38 MRSA Section 40, 4A DB. None of the lots created within subdivision and/or site plan shall have a lot depth to shore concentration greater than five to one.
I know that is not applicable.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, or discussion, all in favor? All right, 118. The long-term cumulative effects of the proposed subdivision and/or site plan will not necess, will not unreasonably increase a great pond's phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the proposed subdivision and/or site plan. Also, not applicable.
Second.
All, third discussion, all in favor?
Okay.
And 119. Impact on adjoining municipality. For any proposed subdivision that crosses municipal boundaries, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable traffic, congestion, or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public ways in an adjoining municipality in which part of the subdivision is located. And this is also not applying.
So we're saying that this won't affect, affect traffic in the same project, correct?
Well, we're asking with, with, just the impact on the adjoining municipality.
Sometimes the subdivision's, it travels two towns.
So it does not, it does not, it does not impact. I mean, it does not go into the municipality.
Yeah, so.
I'd say it's not applicable.
Second.
No, that is, yeah, not applicable.
Yeah, it's actually, I, I think George has got a good point. The other criteria, if you see, if you look more really carefully, it's a subdivision or site plan. This one doesn't say or a site plan, it doesn't match.
Yeah.
So it's not applicable.
Is that a possible discussion?
So do we?
No.
You're moving, does someone second in that motion?
Yeah, all in favor?
Okay.
So somebody, maybe there should be an overall vote that, you know, based on, of the project that's shown on the plans dated such and such, or approved. But, but it actually would have a new date? Like, it, it seems like a big idea for the overall vote done tonight.
So, okay. I'm going to rephrase that motion. Um.
Based on all the above, the, the motion is to approve the plan, um, the site plan, with the expected, um, changes. So we'll fill in the, the date when the new changes come in. But if you're gonna have a vote on tonight.
And also can, could we define more clearly what, like, what the unreasonable congestion would be? Is that something?
Using industry standard, uh, back on 1.5?
Right.
That's gonna be, they're using industry metrics that the, uh, the traffic, your, your town's traffic engineer will apply based on his experience. And there are books on us that, that.
Of what?
With, I don't know, on their own national, I mean, they, they have, I mean, they're licensed professionals.
No, not yet.
No, so that they, I don't, I don't think we need to just find out. Using accepted industry standards.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah. And I'll write this all up for you and you can fine tune. You can house me and say, no, we'll change that word, this is a better word to use. I expect that.
So if the applicant, um, comes, accepts that two-year, uh, looks the, you know, their.
They don't have to accept it.
And then, uh, and, and that they, um, you know, make these changes, you know? I guess I'd mean, I, I would vote in favor. Is that what you want for a straw vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, excellent. Looking for, okay, let's keep, I, I was thinking of looking for, like, an official vote.
Official motion.
Yeah, official motion, this is, we're out of the straw. We're into the, this is official, cause what we're talking about, we pretty much agree too.
Yeah.
Okay, so the official motion would be that the plans are resubmitted with the changes. And that in two years' time, there's a reevaluation as per industry standard to see if there is an unreasonable congestion or unsafe condition that has occurred as a result of the proposed plan that will be brought.
Yeah, and the applicant agrees, I'll write this up, if the applicant agrees to pay for that survey or additional study and make the changes recommended, if any.
Okay, so.
And it was helpful to know the applicant agrees with this.
I agree.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it'd be kinda horrible if.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Randy, are there metrics that, that if there's congestion, stopped traffic on a, on a street that's forty miles an hour? Is there a metric that evaluates congestion?
Site distance.
Level of service.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it. If you're saying is a stopped vehicle on a forty mile per hour road, um, is there a standard for that? No.
So how, so how?
Vehicles, vehicles stop on, on roads all the time, you know, whether it be thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty. The, the issue is that, uh, if a car approaching that stopped vehicle can't see it in time to stop, that's an issue.
So like congestion is not an issue, that an industry standard for congestion is fine?
Congestion would be level of service. That would be the level of service that we were talking about. You know, how long are they sitting there? Um, you know, is it at a signalized intersection? Is it at an unsignalized intersection? So there's a combination of, you know, safety, it, it all depends on where you're located and the circumstances. Um, you know, like I said, it could be a, a site distance issue. Um, how long is that single car, uh, waiting? Versus whether or not there's four cars, five cars, six cars waiting to turn. Um, so it's, yes, there are, there are standards for all those things.
So there's a metric, if you have twenty cars at that intersection and they're stacked up twenty deep?
Correct.
There's a standard that says that is, that is.
Right, if it were at the signalized intersection, for instance, you would do a capacity analysis that would, uh, identify, one, um, are the queues creating a problem? For instance, uh, if you had a, say, a left turn pocket for, for left turning vehicles and they extended out of their pocket and were blocking through traffic when they, through traffic got a green light. They couldn't, they couldn't reach their green light. That's an issue, that's a problem. Um, if they had to wait more than a certain length of time in order to make their movement, for instance, what I was talking about as far as, um, you know, if they get a green light and everybody gets through, that's not really an issue, that's not really a problem. The, the delay that they experience depends on the timing of the traffic signal. So there's a lot of, uh, variables.
So like you're, you're, you know, I know you're licensed in the state of Maine, right? But like, there's not a traffic code just for the state of Maine. So like, you're looking at a national traffic code, like, New York City.
Correct.
What is acceptable in New York City is not acceptable unless that, that's where. And you're gonna look at a national traffic code?
Correct, correct. There's, there's, um, I, I also used to be the, the region traffic engineer for Maine DOT, uh, for the southern part of the state. Um, so I'm very versed on what Maine DOT looks for, um, as well. But they use, Maine DOT has accepted national standards. And the reason for that is so that, um, a driver, no matter where they are in the United States, has the same, they're the same expectations. Now, if you were in New York City, for instance, um, an E may be, um, acceptable because you're in New York City, an E or an F. For instance, if you're in Portland, um, even in Portland, an E or an F may be acceptable, um, in Portland. And what Portland looks at is they don't care about whether or not it's an E or an F. They care about, is it safe? Is it causing, uh, congestion problems? Um, this area isn't, is not a downtown Portland. So yes, an E or an F is relevant. Um, you don't want a level of service E or an F. Your, your criteria is D, which is the, the standard. Some more congested areas, um, they know what the standard is. It's still an E or an F, but they're willing to put up with that because it's a downtown area. So the E or F doesn't change as far as, um, whether or not it's an E or an F. It's still an E or an F here versus Portland versus New York. What the difference is, is what is the municipality willing to accept? Um, in your case, it would be a D is an acceptable level of service.
Is that what it's at right now?
No.
No, it's, it's above that.
What is it right now?
Um.
The intersection, the signalized intersection is a C.
A C?
Overall, and then the, the driveways are A.
Are A?
Right.
Okay.
But again, um, you know, there would be, in this study, there would be more observations, you know? How, how is it queuing? How is it operating? Um, and it would be during the peak times of the day, during the AM peak, during the PM peak. And it would probably be over, um, more than one day. It would probably be several days, just in case there's some variability in traffic volumes. So I know what you're looking for.
I think we need to have that metric included in the motion. Cause otherwise it's just subjective and it's just a joke.
Okay, can you give us, me a reference, uh, like a book or, uh, the, the, internet, I, some international traffic manual or something?
Your standards, the, the way you worded it was, was perfect.
The industry standards.
Industry standards.
But who determined, who determines what?
I think that's. Yeah, which book do you use, you know, like the industry standard?
Not the book, but what A, B, C, or D is acceptable unless that means.
Right, that would be.
That's what we need to know.
Yeah, that, that would be, for instance, a highway capacity.
That's already in the traffic study, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
Let's, let's define way back land as to what's considered acceptable.
So is there a reference that could be added to level of service E? Cause I'm hearing that's when it's not acceptable. And add to the condition to say, if the parking lot creates a level of service E at the intersection, then we can reevaluate. Right, while also looking at safety and.
Right, right, there are so many variables that, that need to be considered in looking at. You, you can't just look at, you know, the, the highway capacity manual definitions of this. It, it, you have to look at it again in the, which is what I think you want. Um, is, is you want, you want someone out there seeing if there is an issue. Um, not just, you know, there's, you know, if something is unsafe, it's, it's unsafe.
Okay, the, the motion's been made in second, it's voted on, on, on 1.5. Let me try to put that together, and I will by the next meeting, uh, for you to adopt the, the decision.
Well, I think what Jerry's saying is that the, that the rating that it is now, like, is a C and the driveways are A, A. Okay, that's what it is. But if it gets worse than that, which could be a D or an E, um, then that would be, that would not be up to the standard, even though a D would be permissible by the standard of the industry.
A D would be acceptable, would you say that to maintain current standard?
That's what I'm saying, so like the town, so like the, the town ha- has adopted the national standard that D is passable, right?
Yes.
That's correct?
It, yes, that's, yeah, most municipalities use level service D is acceptable and level service E is, is unacceptable.
You need to do something, you need to mitigate the traffic.
Right.
If you've reached that level.
And what, what changes in between like a C and a D?
The delay, the amount of time somebody has to wait.
Okay.
Because of congestion.
Right, so.
I can write the D any bit in there, or C, or whatever, I can tell.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's, I think that's good because I think we're getting close to. I think that's, I think that's good, because I think what he's getting at is the unreasonable is.
At least D is worth it.
D, yeah, if it drops to an E, it's, changes have to be made.
Either C or D.
When you say changes, like, just parking spots would have to be cut, like, to me that's, it's not gonna do, like, there's not a safety issue, right? When traffic gets stacked up, unless it stacks up all the way to the hill, it's not gonna be a safety issue, it's just a congestion issue.
Right.
Right, so there's no safety issue, so like, the only remedy would be to cut spots.
The, the, it could be a safety issue if, for instance, you have a curb in the road.
Right, it stacks all the way up, but it's, for the most part, it's.
Somebody comes around the curb and.
Right.
There's the end of the, the queue.
Right.
That's, that's a, a safety issue. It's not a congestion issue, that's a safety issue. It's caused by the congestion, but it's a safety issue.
Do you have everything that you need?
I think I do.
Okay.
I want, maybe we're sort of allowed to call Randy, but I don't think.
So we have a motion, we don't have a vote yet.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we don't have a vote on the overall yet, I don't, I don't think. Because the motion we made seconded on the overall, and I think you've had your discussions with, so I think you.
So, does somebody have a motion that can read the motion, or repeat the motion?
Well, we already did a very specific motion about 1.5, and that, that's gonna include the industry.
Motion before us now.
Uh, the motion for you now is to, based on the applicant meeting, the applicable standards, the site plan is approved. When I say site plan, fudging that a little bit because it's gonna be a new site plan, it's gonna show the, the traffic, and put in the date when it comes out.
So approve with the conditions of adding the lights and the pedestrian crosswalks.
Okay, the site plan adding, based on all of the above, the applicant has satisfied all the standards above, and the site plan is approved with the condition the applicant adds pedestrian crossings and additional lighting to the site plan.
Yeah, and the reevaluation and the.
Well, that's built into the 1.5.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is, this is gonna be the overall big tent vote that wraps it all up.
Then I make the, I'll make the motion as you.
So, yeah, you made the motion, Jim seconded it, so now we just need the vote.
And this is just an overall vote of?
Yeah, it is, I'll, I'll approve the project with all the conditions that we've talked about.
So basically the final approval?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
So we wanna talk about how long do you need to put together your vice president?
Uh, I think probably have it, I think, about the end of this week.
So we've got, I always throw out Tuesdays, is that the best day for everyone still? Do you wanna go for a third meeting in May? Do you wanna go for the first Tuesday in June and have that be a regular meeting?
I asked the question, the first been approved with conditions, right? What are we going to the next meeting for? Is it just to review the text?
You know, they're gonna see the, the broadside plan, and there's gonna be, the detailed findings are gonna be in writing at that point.
Okay, then the board will see the settlement and move forward.
And you're gonna vote on it right, right there.
Yeah, you adopt those findings.
Yeah, we'll move off the findings.
Sorry.
So we can't meet on the 11th, right, June 11th? The 4th be too late? Just having a regular meeting on the 4th?
June 11th.
Oh, June 11th.
Because we're working up Tuesdays. Sorry, Jim, what's your question?
We're just having a regular meeting on the 4th.
Does that work for anyone?
Yes.
I don't, I don't be able to make that.
What was the date? June 4th? I can't remember.
No, no, excuse us.
But we need to decide, we can't, the town meeting is on the 11th, correct? So we can't meet on the 11th anyway. So we gotta decide.